Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. One change to the seating's agenda. I'm going to move up the final action item, which is setting our council meeting for December 21st, just that we have several items that will be referring to December 21st. Make sure that that's approved ahead of time. So we'll move that up in the agenda. And I'll ask if there are any changes to the seating's agenda from the council or any additions.
Mayor, we would ask the council table the public hearing for the abandonment of the easement on 23rd Street on the south side of Jackson Avenue.
Okay. We'll table that. Also, we will not be hearing a presentation tonight in the public appearances from Melanie Brown. So we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the November 9th meeting. We have the October finance report, approval of liquor licenses for La Hacienda and the Fraternal Order of Eagles. We have a salary resolution in the water department, and we have approval of claims in the amount of $292,088.47. You also have your presentation of where we are in terms of revenue and expenditures on a percentage basis through this portion of the fiscal year. Entertain any questions on the consent agenda? Not motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Revulinski.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we'll move to our public appearances, and we have representatives of the Lions Club for the carriage ride. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Lions Club, each year for the lighting ceremony, the Lions sponsors of wagon rides around town from Doug Smith, and we'd like to do that again this year. It'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. We will have the south side, inside part of the south side of the square blocked off. Darryl's going to have barricades for us, and we would just like your blessing to do so.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Looking forward to the lighting this Friday. Entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Now, counsel, we'll move to our action items and resolutions. So we'll start with setting our December council meeting for Monday, December 21st at 7:00 p.m.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hammers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Counsel, next, I will invite Travis Squires from Piper Jaffray to join us. We have several action items regarding the borrowing of $4.6 million in sewer revenue capital loan notes. So good evening, Travis.
Good evening. Well, good to be with you all. I figured probably the best thing is I'll just open up with the presentation material. This is the first step we call, I guess, between the working group, we call this Step One. So this is the part of the conveyance project with the sewer. This isn't dealing with the potential new plant yet at this point. So what we're asking for approval tonight is just engagement in the form of term sheet for distribution for what would be the interim financing. The way that the plan is currently set up as far as the financing plan is that the long-term financing would be provided through USDA loan. And to do that, they do not offer interim financing. So during the construction period, they do not provide you with funding until you get to the point in which you've completed the project. So that leaves the city with a gap as far as finding the money during that interim period of time. So ultimately, you'll be working through that process, soliciting your local banks and other area banks to hopefully come up with a, we would hopefully, will be cost-effective financing. So before getting into that, though, I did want to take, we haven't really done a big picture, how does this all fit into the city's sewer budget conversation? So I wanted to take some time to walk through that, and I do have a brief packet of information that, send that around, Darren, that'd be great.
Was this included in our packet?
This is new. This is hot off the press this afternoon, so unfortunately, no, this wasn't part of the packet. To talk a little bit about what we have tonight, I want to review what I see as the timeline, kind of the financing plan, the layout, your two projects, what we see. You know, the good news is the rate increases that you have put in place thus far do, in fact, cover your debt service payments for both of these projects. The issue that you face is that that's just holding a flat line on expenditures. So if we could hold a flat line on expenditures and assume no inflation over time, then you wouldn't ever need to change rates. But unfortunately, we know that operating costs may change. So we'll get into kind of looking at, as the plant comes on, what is kind of an appropriate type of increase to get in line for that component? But we've already discussed that this first Step One will not require any rate increase at the city level. So the city has, you know, put themselves in a position where they're not, you know, you've been funding this, you've been building up a cash balance, so that's obviously a good thing. As far as tonight, there is an engagement letter with Piper Jaffray after we review the plan. There's a form of term sheet that does have a lot of blanks that was provided previously. We're working through that right now with your bond counsel, as well as getting some more information from city financial staff to kind of shore that up, to get it investor-ready, so to speak. As far as upcoming dates and how we see this kind of playing out, assuming that there's approval of distribution this evening, you hold the public hearing, we will work within the next week to have those financing proposals out, so to speak, the street, so that investors can review them and provide feedback prior to your December 21st meeting. So at that point in time, we should have a proposal for acceptance. The way that the USDA program works is that in order for them to move forward and give you final approval of plans and specs, you actually have to have evidence that you can achieve the interim financing in place. So that's why this is kind of, all of a sudden, we're rushing around to get this. Well, that's a step that we got to get done before you can actually go out to bid the project. So we anticipate having a verbal approval on the 21st of December, and then formal issuance will occur after you've actually achieved the, what we'll call kind of the bids and the budget with the project, which have to be signed off through the USDA program as well. So it might be Step One, but there might be a component that isn't quite finalized, but at least you'll have a framework for the financing known on the 21st. So going through this packet, and one thing I do want to kind of go through is, on this first page of this packet, is just a real quick five-year snapshot of your last four audits, in a simplified form, operating receipts and operating disbursements, and then you see a net income number. So your net income numbers obviously fluctuated a lot, which, you know, might come as a surprise, but your sewer revenues are oftentimes tied to your water revenues. So if you have a good year, a good year from the city perspective, where your water bills are quote-unquote higher, you know, your revenues look better, but then you can see that it's still cyclical. Even when you put in rate increases, you can have drops in your revenue stream. So that's what makes it a little hard with kind of long-term planning in the sewer fund. All in all, you guys have funded some projects over the last couple of years, built up a cash balance that'll kind of allow you to jumpstart into these projects without taking it all out on long-term financing. So that's obviously a good thing. As it stands right now, if you kind of want to look, the bar bottom right number on this page is 1.38 million. What that means is we kind of worked through our calculations of net income. This becomes the amount in which we have to do our calculations. So your revenue available for debt service, you take your net income, add back in your interest expense, you come up with a number of 1.38 million. Your maximum payment that you can fund, then, is, you divide that number by 1.1. So your maximum annual payment on that revenue stream is about 1.25 million. Well, right now, your annual payments are somewhere in, are right around 380,000 per year. Is that number right? Yeah, about 380,000 per year approximately, give or take a little bit. And the new plant and Step One of this project, if you look at the debt service on the following page when we get there, that's about $1 million. So you can see that there's still some rate adjustment needed. You guys did put one more step and rate increase in place after this '14 audit was set up. So that sets you up to almost be able to do it, but we have to make some assumptions regarding future inflation. So with that as your backstop, the following page, excuse me, gives you your Step One conveyance project. So you see, excuse me, on this page, kind of working from left to right, you see your annual payments. So you have two SRF loans right now. What that means is loans through the state revolving fund with Iowa Finance Authority. The 2011 one is at 3%. The 2012 is at 1.75%. The way we have it set up right now on the Step One financing is at 4.4 million. You're probably a little confused, why is there a 4.4, why is there a 4.6? And then you look at your application with the USDA, and it's actually 4.281 million. Well, we're rounding on numbers here a little bit. Ultimately, they will approve the final budget. As it stands right now, you anticipate that to be 4.28 million. We rounded up on this interim financing in the hearing amount to get to 4.6, but obviously, you only borrow the amount that's needed. So we've just thrown 4.4 million on this Step One. The way the USDA loan works, it's a 2.12% rate over 40 years, is what has been discussed. You know, obviously, you're thinking, well, how in the world can they offer that? Well, there's federal dollars backing it, which helps subsidize the interest rate. Clearly not a market rate. If you're going out to the market, you're not going to borrow for 40 years at 2.12%. But one advantage of the program, in addition, this total project right now sits closer to 6.9 million, and there is grant money available, which is, again, is also kind of, I'd say, staved off some of the potential rate increase that the city was otherwise looking at. So as you go all the way over on this, you see principal total interest administration and then PNI, or for principal and interest, your maximum annual payments work out to about 477,000 per year is kind of your top number that you have. If you kind of flow this over, there's really one requirement that the USDA is going to be worried about, and that's the coverage ratio. So when we say coverage, that means, on the prior page, the revenue is available for debt service divided by the total amount of debt service. And that number has to be greater than 1.1. You're not in danger of that at all. The other thing we look at is just your free cash flow within your budget. We've made some adjustments to try to look at the city's sewer budget, working with Mike, in that, well, is there a way that we can, you know, up our annual ongoing maintenance budget so that we're not always reliant upon borrowing for sewer projects? So we've built that into it, and as you see that second column over from the right, it says net free cash flow, and you see that number runs at about 600,000 per year, and you're thinking, well, that's way more than we need. Well, yes, it is, but you're going to see in a couple pages that that number goes away relatively quickly when we start talking about the potential cost of the new plant. As I, as you flip to the next page, it's just similar. This is page three. Page numbers are on the bottom right. All I've done here is assume that you were to have, if you look in the top right, there's an inflation factor of 3%. So in other words, I'm assuming your operating expenditures were to go up by 3%. In that case, you see your coverage ratios still stay relatively high with respect to this original project, but you see your net free cash flow does begin to decline over time, and that's based on the assumption that you do have some annual ongoing expenditures paid out of the sewer fund. What that tells you is that you're not okay today. If you assume 3% inflation, you're going to have to assume some sort of annual increase in order to keep up with an inflation factor. And in this case, I built that number at 1.25. If you look at the fifth column over from the left, that 1.25 change in rate would overcome 3% annual cost inflation and keep your net cash flow relatively positive outside of the last couple of years. But, you know, at that point, we're 40 years out. I don't think you can, you know, throw a stone at really assumptions. 3% inflation over 40 years, you know, you double your expenditures relatively fast, but this is not meant to be a 40-year plan. It's meant to really look out the next 20 and then be able to make some adjustments. Page four then adds in the plant under the same structure with assuming USDA loan. At this point, though, we have assumed the full cost of the plan is estimated at about 22 million. This is not, assuming any grant funds are in place, obviously, they've been applied for, just not going to know for a while. So this is more or less worst-case scenario, but we don't also have the approval yet on the USDA loan. But as we're looking at it, 40 years, now if you look at your principal and interest total, you see that number gets up to about 1.3 million in some of those years for debt service. So this is the reason why the city has been increasing rates in order to plan for this new plant. The good news you see under this scenario is that if you assume no additional inflation on operating cost expenditures, you know, right now, you do have enough to meet your coverage ratios, but you do have some years where your free cash flow begins to go negative based on kind of your ongoing operating expenditures. If you throw inflation on here, that's where this becomes a more troubling scenario. And when I say troubling, just from the means of, we need to look at the rate structure. We can't just assume no change in rates. So we're on page five now. So Step One conveyance project plus the new plant. What we have illustrated here would be a one-time change in rate at this point. It was just thrown out there as a 9% increase, and then you could look at some sort of CPI-type number to keep pace with the ongoing inflation. And again, this is just really high-level illustrations. We'll get into more planning down the road. But I just thought, from the council perspective, to give you guys a little bit of an overview of what we're looking at from a high level, you know, as it stands right now with Step One, no additional rate increase. As you start looking at the plant cost, you know, that number could change a little bit. The one other thing that I would mention is, you know, there's nothing that says that you have to pay this off over 40 years, and we certainly are not necessarily an advocate of keeping a 40-year repayment schedule just because of the unknowns that you might have. And you hope the asset lasts for 40 years, but you don't always know that. So looking at a, perhaps, one option would be, well, can we also look at this as, you know, take the 40-year loan but then prepay it? Because the USDA doesn't, does allow you to do that. You could actually structure it out, well, let's have a 30-year amortization on it, and we'll just stick to that even though we have the flexibility to go out to 40. So we have had some of those conversations. The difference between a 40-year and 30-year structure on these two projects is about $4 million in interest cost over time. That's high level, hopefully, summary. I just wanted to kind of, you know, we haven't talked this at the council table, really. You know, I know your committees have worked hard on this, and Darren especially has been spearheading a lot of the work. So I just want to give you the high level. You know, as we see it right now, we just have to account for inflation, figuring out a rate structure that allows you to not have to come back year after year with, oh, well, we need a 5% increase, oh, and we also need another 5% increase. If they can be more manageable, maybe a one-time higher increase and then have it more manageable under inflation, 1%, 1.5%, 2%, you know, maybe that's an easier structure for your patrons. But, you know, obviously, that's why the council members get paid the big bucks to make those decisions. So that's kind of our high level on that. You guys did have then a participant package for approval, and I'll just kind of go over this real briefly. It's, go ahead.
Question, for example?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I won't be too long. But this 6% in the 2015, now, is that, that's what you're showing, is that something we've already enacted?
Yeah, you guys did a 12% rate increase half-year. So that's shown there in our model, correct? We just don't have the final financials on '15, so that's why that's illustrated. Otherwise, I could really chop off that '15 line, but...
That's fine, but you're not asking us this year to pass another rate increase, but you're saying in two years.
'15 is gone. I'm on, sorry, I'm on fiscal years on here, so...
Right, I see.
The potential additional increase, if you look at that 3% inflation with the plant, would be in effect for the full fiscal '17. So the earliest, then, would be July 1 of this upcoming year, July 1 of '16.
If I could just remind the council, we were looking at three years of 12% prior to the USDA application. Now we're looking at possibly 1.9% with inflationary. So this is very good news.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Yeah, I wish I could say I could take responsibility, but I can't. You know, it's just a nice, nice thing that you've qualified for this program, and it allows you to hopefully receive grant money on this project as well as the next project. Obviously, you've had a lot going on in Fairfield. You know, they recognize, you know, that you guys have put in place rate increases, which I think is, you know, comes to, it's to your advantage that you guys have those in place when you're working with the USDA, because the way they look at your rate structure where it is currently versus perhaps additional increases.
Well, it's a good point, because that's the intention of the grants, is to alleviate that within communities.
Correct.
So it's good that we have shown that we're going in that direction.
Yep. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for Travis? Also, this is the public hearing portion, so I'll declare a public hearing open if there's any comment from the public at this time. If not, we'll close the public hearing. So Travis, the first action then would be to approve the letter of engagement with Piper Jaffray. Now, we approved a letter at our last meeting. Can you explain to the council the distinction between...
The distinction was to allow us to kind of work on the planning aspect of that. We hadn't yet got to the point where we knew if we were working on any sort of financing. So this approves us to be formally engaged with respect to the bond anticipation note or the interim financing for the project. So it's kind of a new step that we have in place for a lot of our projects to kind of start the initial planning. We don't yet know what role is going to be best for us, and, you know, and it might have been that, well, the interim financing is going to be taken care of by USDA, in which case, we don't need to send you a formal agreement for any work that we're doing. So in this place, we have an agreement not to exceed, well, or sorry, approximately 4.6 million as a bond anticipation project note. In the event that the USDA isn't able to perform on their loan, we would also be able to step in and provide long-term financing, likely under a different, we're not going to say 2.12% over 40 years, I'll tell you that. You know, it'd certainly be a market-driven conversation if and when we get there. You know, that's certainly something that would be controlled by a future...
But we would likely redirect a SRF at that time, anyway, but...
Yeah. Yeah, it's only in the event that there's not, there's not any sort of access between those. If something falls through with the planning apps on those, we would be able to do that. So that's just stipulated in the contract, although it's not anticipated.
Thank you, Travis.
Yep.
So counsel, entertain, the first item of business then would be, entertain a motion to approve the engagement letter with Piper Jaffray.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kalin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Discussion. Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, counsel, as Travis had mentioned, there's a term sheet for distribution, and at this point in time, there aren't a lot of specifics. We just know that it'll be at a maximum borrowing of 4.6 million. So entertain a motion to approve the term sheet.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kalin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Discussion. Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And then finally, would be the authorization for the loan agreement for the issuance not to exceed 4.6 million in sewer revenue capital loan notes for the city of Fairfield.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Discussion. Now, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Travis. We appreciate your time tonight. Appreciate you coming down. And have a safe trip back and a good Thanksgiving with your family.
Yeah, you guys as well. And if there's, with this format, this is kind of a model we have. If there's suggestions that, to make it easier to read when we start comparing other options, please let us know, and we can modify that. So let Mike know, and we can update our templates for you guys. Great. Thank you all.
Good. Enjoy your Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and have a Thanksgiving. Next, counsel, we'd like to set a public hearing for our meeting in December of the 21st, and that would be for the sale of 2257 Marigold Boulevard. Again, that is the Lyman Williams property that the city now owns. We have interest that's been expressed to purchase the property and move it, so we will have bids opened at that time, Mike, or will they be opened at the...
They'll actually be opened on December 8th, Mayor. We'll bring back a recommendation to counsel at the 21st meeting, prior to the public hearing.
Very good.
And that is just the house and any outbuilding?
Correct.
Or anything like that?
It's not even the outbuildings. It's just the house.
Just the house.
All other property remain in possession in the city of Fairfield. And a copy of the bid that went to the papers in your packets for...
The house, it'll be moved off the land to another location.
Correct.
Right.
That's correct.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy, to set December 21st for a public hearing for the sale. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, counsel, I'll invite Melanie Carlson from French Renniker, and we are looking at plans and specifications for two blocks on Kirkwood Avenue. Melanie, good evening.
So this project is a DOT STP-funded project, which means that 80% comes from money that you're allocated from the DOT with 20% coming from city funding. I believe attached to your packet is only the cost estimate, so I'll start there, that it's, the estimated construction cost is 258,000 for these two blocks on Kirkwood from where we left off on 7th to 9th. The project includes around 2,400 square yards of concrete. We are widening the road. The DOT changed the classification since your last Kirkwood project, which is requiring us to be a little wider. That also allows that parking to remain, to remain there. The project also includes around 500 feet of storm sewer. If you're familiar with Kirkwood and 8th, you know a lot of water stands there, and there's a large roof drain coming from Falco that also discharges to that intersection. So we'll be adding intakes to 8th and Kirkwood, and then taking that south to connect to some existing storm sewers. So we'll be looking at some better drainage, especially on 8th Street. This has a, it's a DOT letting for December 15th. A couple of things I wanted to point out. We'll have, there's about five trees on the project that are going to be removed, mainly because of the widening. And then there are, and the tree removal is part of the project. The one item that is not part of the project is there's, the hydrants need to be moved back so that we can widen the street, and the water department's aware of moving those. They're also going to be doing some valve replacement and a little bit of other water work before the street project starts.
Melanie, the tree removals, the neighbors, have they been notified of, have they notified the removal of the project in general?
No, we have not sent letters to them yet.
Okay. And what, when will that be part of the process?
You want to try for after first year, Mike?
Certainly.
We'll get something out to them, yeah.
Okay.
They actually won't be removed until the contractor starts in the spring, so we'll get them some notice soon.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on the drawings and specifications for the Kirkwood project? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, entertain a motion then to approve the drawing and specifications for the Kirkwood project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hammers, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign.
I'm going to choose to abstain from this because of my employment with the DOT.
Okay. Thank you, Darren. Okay. Next council, let's see, we are tabling the easement. That is next on your agenda. We will then move to the public hearing and resolution regarding the Walton Club lease, and ask our city attorney, John Morrissey, if anything different than what we considered last time.
We have the Walton Club manager here, too, and I think this is probably an opportune time to have her input, if there is any, lest she have a conflict of interest in a month.
Before she has to abstain, right.
So what we've done is...
Welcome, Katie.
Welcome. We've abbreviated what we used to have in a four-page lease to something briefer. What is going on in this lease is an extension that is long-term, and essentially, what we want to do is define what is leased compared to what we used to lease, and it's changed considerably. The last lease, back in the early 90s, we didn't have the Walton Club subdivision of 34 lots. And so, at this point, the only lot out there that the city really has a real estate interest in, except for the reservoir and the golf course and the roads, is the lot that the Walton Clubhouse sits on. Walton Clubhouse, however, the structure, all the improvements and so forth, belong to the nonprofit entity that is the Walton Club and has been for generations. So essentially, what we're doing here is we're leasing it long-term so they can continue on with the practices that have gone out there as far as maintaining our courts, taking care of a club facility for social gathering, and maintaining the grounds around both. And essentially, this has been in front of your board, hasn't it, Katie? We're doing this for a nominal fee, but that's not to say that there aren't considerable expenses that are absorbed by the Walton Club each year as far as the maintenance out there that the city relies on. The city, in the past, there were parts of the infrastructure out there that were not as well-defined as they are now. Some of the lanes and the infrastructure pipes, for instance, the water system used to run out of the clubhouse water system. At this point, we have a total package out there, water and sewer, that's central system for the city, so the Walton Club's no longer responsible for that. That's a big change in this lease. There's a new bridge. The roads are dedicated to the city. So essentially, the cart sheds, the parking lot, the upkeep around the clubhouse, and the golf course is what we're hopeful is all of the understandings that we need to concern ourselves about out there. The city, as far as things that take place out there, as far as public safety responsibilities, road maintenance and that sort of thing, knows since the time we subdivided that those were going to be changed. This lease is catching up with what we've already done out there. So I think we've pared it down to the core understandings. It's agreeable to your board. And I guess if you have questions for the manager or myself, that's what we've negotiated and we're recommending.
Okay. Thank you, John. Length of the lease, John, again is?
It's till 2025.
It's 10, 10 years from now.
Right. Thanks. Counsel, any questions regarding the approval of the lease? Okay. Katie, any comments from the manager's side?
We're just very appreciative that you guys have expedited this process. It was up for renewal in December, and we wanted to make sure it didn't get overlooked. So we appreciate your timely turnaround, and the updates make us feel a lot better about what our responsibilities are out there.
Great. Thank you. Hey, counsel, then, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Walton Club lease.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hammers.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you very much. Okay, counsel, next, we have three items that are in reference to the amending of our urban revitalization plan, and in working with CBC Financial and their plans to renovate and create low-income and market-rate senior housing at the Loudon Building on Broadway, a lot of work has been done to extend our tax abatement program. You're all familiar that they are presenting an application to the state for this project that the city is willing to participate in. We will be participating through the tax abatement process. So the three items that we're going to look at tonight will be a resolution to amend the Fairfield Commercial Industrial Residential Urban Revitalization Plan. That is for the purposes of the application that's being submitted. The second will be the first reading, and possibly more, of the ordinance itself. We discussed this at our last meeting, that if we were able to pass this through its final reading tonight, then that business would be done, and there would, they would have that certainty. And then the final resolution would be the agreement for the city to pledge 100% of that 10-year tax abatement to this project. So this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing if there are any comments at this time. Okay? If not, we'll close the public hearing. So the first item of business then would be to adopt, in resolution form, the proposed amendments.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kalin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion?
I hate to bring it up, but I don't see 10 years in here, John. I don't really understand how this amendment covers what we're trying to do.
Do you have any? Go ahead, Mike. Yes.
So on page one of your, the attachment to your packet, you'll see the multi-residential exemption schedule. The multi-residential exemption schedule on page one, the very last sentence, we're proposing to change from three years to 10 years. So this would abate the increment, the taxes on the increment, from three years to 10 years.
Okay, I didn't find this amendment, so I didn't, okay.
And then, just a reminder to council, this, we have set our city boundary as the limits for this residential revital, or the revitalization plan. So any multi-residential property within the city limits of Fairfield would qualify for this program as currently presented to council.
So based on this ordinance, we would, we would be compelled to give 10 years to any multi-residential?
That is improving. So if there were current structures in existence, and they improved their valuation by more than 10%, then we would be compelled to give them abatement on the increment.
And the definition of multi-residential is?
Three units or more.
Three, only three or more?
Three units or more. Correct.
But we can change this at any time if we feel like it's out of control.
Yeah, like next meeting or something.
That's not fair.
Yeah.
Okay. It's clear enough to me. I just didn't see this in links here.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion. Yeah, okay. Please call the roll.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, counsel, then, the second item of business would be the ordinance itself. So as we had discussed, is there interest in suspending the rules to pass this from the first to the third and final reading at this time?
So moved, just because this is time-sensitive, and we want to see this building get renovated.
Yes.
And it's non-controversial. I haven't heard from anyone about this pro or con.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Hallie, second by Hammers, to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. And the next item would be then to motion to pass it from the first to the third and final reading.
I move to pass it from first to third.
Moved by Ledger Kalin?
Second.
Second by Revolinsky. Please call the roll.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, and David, good luck with the project from here. You have a comment for us?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for expediting for us. It's really, hopefully, with in margin, we'll get the good news.
Well, good, good luck, and bring us back goodness. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next council, we move to the second reading of ordinance 1134, which is the alcohol server training ordinance. And I'd ask the council at this time if there's any feedback that they've received regarding the, regarding the ordinance. Now, I'd open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the public who would like to comment on the server training ordinance. Now, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to pass this from the second to the third reading.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kalin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next council, we move to the mayor's report, and I have two reappointments to the Park and Rec Board, and that would be Rhonda Whitney and Terry Delker, whose terms expire at the end of this year, so I'd like to appoint them to another three-year term. Entertain a motion to approve Rhonda Whitney and Terry Delker.
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. I just wanted to call attention, counsel, if you received your Cityscape magazine, which is put out by the Iowa League Municipal, as you'll see, that Fairfield was featured on the cover of the magazine for its energy efficiency work. Yeah, go ahead. And a lot of the solar...
Great article, too.
Yeah, it was, it was a great program. You can also see some of the other comments in there about what some of the other cities are doing. It's nice to show that leadership, and, and hopefully, you know, that type of work continues in our community as well. Let's see, we'll move on to our committee reports. Environmental and Franchise Committee?
A situation arose over on Dogwood Street Drive Avenue, where one of the light poles came down, and the poles in that neighborhood were installed where, an upgrade from what the rest of the town has, most of, most of the poles around town are wood, and the poles in that neighborhood are fiberglass. We think it was done when FIDA was selling lots out there to dress up the neighborhood a little bit. Alliant Energy contacted the city and asked if they could replace the fiberglass that had broken with the standard wood. The committee felt we don't have enough information, we don't know exactly what the agreement was, that that was in place to put the fiberglass in the first place, maybe if there's a covenant in the neighborhood, the neighborhood's willing to pay for fiberglass replacement, or the cost difference between wood and fiberglass. So John Morrissey's name was mentioned as the only person who may...
He's swearing.
There he comes. You heard his name. You thought, perhaps John Morrissey knows about why there are fiberglass light poles in the Dogwood streets.
In the Park Place subdivision on...
Yeah, who paid for them?
John, do you recall when we built, when we built the development, the mystery behind why?
So one of the fiberglass poles is down, Alliant wants to replace it with wood, but they seem to need the city's permission to do so, to change.
The way I remember it, when FIDA did that, and the city partnered, those were a good buy. And essentially, I believe FIDA inputted some of the cost of that part of the infrastructure, the city did, water and sewer down there and streets.
Right.
And I think there was like $200,000 and some $1,000 that FIDA was prepared to spend on that, and I think the light poles, it was about what seemed like similar equivalent value, and that just was a good buy.
Yeah, that would make sense, because it wouldn't be something that the city would have spent money on. I know we just did the infrastructure at that time, and, and certainly, Alliant was probably not going to put the decorative poles in.
FIDA also paid for some sidewalks and park installation and stuff, too, so...
Well, the question is now, would there be any sort of agreement that Alliant would be required to replace it with, with a light kind of pole? Because they seem to want to...
I don't believe so. There's nothing that detailed back then. And when FIDA dedicated the streets and everything in the subdivision to the city, I would say it's then the city's choice, and there wasn't any kind of covenant or any expectation it would have to be that way versus metallic or whatever. Are they proposing putting in something ugly?
Not ugly.
Well, something completely different than what...
This is their standard.
What's the price difference, Mike?
We don't know yet.
They call them telephone poles, John.
We'll look into it.
You're scaring me.
So I'm personally resistant to the idea of the city paying for a nicer pole than the standard that Alliant's willing to put in. So we have to find out what the price difference between the wood, which is their standard, and a replacement fiberglass would be.
Yeah.
And then we have to find out who's going to pay.
Who's going to pay.
Exactly.
There's an active neighborhood association, Bill Cork, might be the person that counts that, the operator of the Central Mexican restaurant.
Okay, so that's who will contact.
That's a good suggestion, Adam. Just let, make sure the residents know what's being planned out there.
So we didn't, we tabled it until we got all the information we needed.
Okay, so no, no action on that. Counsel, if you'll allow me to go back to board appointments, I had one more, and that is for the airport board, and I'd like to propose Jim Masterson, and he would be replacing, is it Tom Thompson's position? Right, he'd be replacing Tom Thompson, who is going to be joining the council in January, so entertain a motion to approve Jim Masterson.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie, second by Hammers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thanks. Then we'll move to Public Safety and Transportation Committee report.
We met prior to this meeting, we discussed three topics. The first topic, we had a request to add two additional handicap parking stalls to Main Street in front of the Civic Center. There's currently two there out of 11 spaces, and they wanted to add two additional stalls. We tabled that to get more information from Melanie and others, to see what the average should be for handicap to regular stalls. There have been complaints to Civic Center about the number of handicap stalls there for shows that they have, and not enough parking there for that, so we kind of tabled that until we get more information. We also discussed a crosswalk and flashing light out on Highway 1 North in front of MUM Campus. There's currently one flashing yellow light out there for southbound traffic. There is nothing for northbound traffic. They wanted to add one of those, and they wanted to add one crosswalk at the base of a new set of steps that crosses the highway where there's no other sidewalk on the west side of the street. The committee felt it would be advantageous to add a flashing light prior to those crosswalks, giving motorists the indication there's something had to be cautious of, would be more good than adding an extra crosswalk. And we were in favor of that, but felt it was up to the DOT also to approve that. So we gave them our permission to go to the DOT and basically advise them, we approve that, and then to move forward from there with a flashing light, not an extra crossing walk on that street. And we also discussed, there was a complaint at the intersection of 20th and Jackson, out where our mulch and stuff is, of needing to have that be a controlled intersection. Evidently, there are vehicles that proceed southbound on 20th Street and don't yield to cars that are coming on Jackson and turning on the 20th and just driving straight across. The committee felt there wasn't probably enough of a need to pass an ordinance and add a yield sign there that referred to the police chief to watch the area, if they have time, and report back to us. So there was really no actions taken.
Okay. Thanks for your report, Tony. Appreciate that. And next council, we'll move to our Administrator Department reports.[1775.98] move to our Administrator Department Reports. Melanie, for a project report, please.
The list is getting shorter, but it's December, so I'm glad. Some very good news on step one is we received approval from the rule development engineer for the plans and specs of step one. So that's another item checked off, so that hopefully we can bid step one. In addition to the things that you did tonight, we, we are shooting for advertising the bids on January 11th and opening them February 11th. So hopefully we get a few more things done in the next 30 days, and we can proceed with that schedule. The other very good news is I, we got the last property owner on the facade project signed late Friday. Didn't make it onto the agenda, but Jewel and Brian McDonald became the eighth and final property owner to join the facade project. So we now have 16 addresses affected, and includes...
Some of the largest buildings on the square too, which is, which is positive.
Elks, and then Jewel and Brian's building, Morning Star Studio, two of the larger buildings. So this is great news.
Right.
And so they should be, Curtis Architecture now needs to finalize plans, and they should be bidding this early 2016.
Great. And the, I thought the best news was Highland Street. You mentioned Highland Street.
It's been open for a while, but Third Street did open since the last project update. So, you know, knock on wood, I believe we don't have any streets closed at this time.
Great. All right, thanks Melanie. Any questions for Melanie on her report? Thank you Melanie, appreciate it. Mike, if you'd talk to us about our upcoming budget plans.
Thank you Mayor. If you can believe, at that time of year is upon us already, where we need to start talking fiscal '17 budget. So I've outlined, Joy and I have worked to put together a preliminary proposed budget process for consideration by the council. And that budget process, essentially, we would hand materials out to department heads on December 9th, give them approximately three weeks to formulate their budget, and submit that back. We would then compose a preliminary budget and meet with department heads to really look at revenues and expenditures and find out if there are any anomalies or any forecasts that we feel may need to be tweaked before it hits Ways and Means. At that point in time, I would ask department heads to present their budget to Ways and Means and talk about some of the programs that they plan to have in 2017, and some of their larger capital equipment expenditures and those types of, of things. So those presentations would take place during January, and then I've scheduled a series of three Ways and Means work sessions for consideration of elimination of any potential deficits that we may have. Once that happens, we propose to bring a preliminary budget to council for consideration on the 22nd of February, hopefully passage that night, and we can meet our March 15th deadline. Under that particular timeframe, that leaves one council meeting for what I'm going to call Wiggle Room. That gives us one meeting, some flexibility there. So it's not pushing it right up against the deadline, but it is pretty close. Any que, I would entertain any questions that the council may have.
Wiggle Room is a technical term.
It is a very technical term, yes.
There's a typo in your...
I saw that, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you Mike, we appreciate that. That council brings us to the end of our meeting. We do need to go into a closed session before, entertain a motion to do that. To everyone else, wish you a happy Thanksgiving, and we look forward to seeing everyone in December. So entertain a motion then to go into closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.